In the mayor's absence, it is my privilege to call the city council to order for our meeting of Monday, August 31. Roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Present.
Lunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson. Reinbold.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Ronain.
Present. Do you want to see if the mayor is present?
Yeah, okay. You're sitting his place, but yeah, okay. Mayor Shoneman.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item would be consideration of the minutes of our city council meeting of August 24. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, we would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Rux, seconded by Rife. Roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there anyone who signed up for open forum, Joe? No, thank you, Joe. Next item would be old business ordinance number 200801 to rezone property, describe its lots four and five in the east 50 feet of lot six, block 13 Highland Park Edition. Are there any changes on that?
No changes from last week.
Okay. We would entertain a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second. Moved by Lunsman, I think, seconded by?
Reinbold.
By Reinbold, okay. Any further discussion? If not, oh, sorry. Roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is our consent calendar, routine city business items A through C with subparts even. We would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rux, seconded by Lunsman. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Under new business, our first item is a petition for voluntary annexation of Lot D, Maloney subdivision, and the adjacent south half of vacated Maple Drive public right-of-way in the north half of Section 11 Township 123 North, range 64 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Brown County. What do you have to report on that, Brett?
Marilyn Maloney is just requesting to annex this piece of property, and it's about half an acre, and it's at 1717 Olive Drive.
This is related to what we approved last week, I take it?
No, this is completely separate.
Well, this is a different piece?
Yes, it is, because you set the hearing date for this week.
Oh, that's right. That's all that was. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bill? We would entertain a motion to approve that petition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rux, seconded, I think, by Lunsman. Roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is discussion of the 2020 and 2021 promotional fund allocations, possible action to amend both the 2020 and the 2021 promotion fund allocations. City manager?
Yes, thank you. This came up during the budget work session that we are going to see a shortfall in 2020, and so you asked to look at that a little bit. Since I've provided some things that you've got in the packet, there have been some questions of what's most timely right now. Probably what's most timely right now is to look at the 2021, since we will have the first reading of the budget ordinance at the next meeting, so if there's something you're wanting to look at, I know some of you have some thoughts on that. And then, once we know the number, we'll be able to put that in the budget and move forward. We don't necessarily have to know the individual allocations, but knowing the total is important. And if that's something you want to look at first, then we'll be able to come back and look at 2020 and have some options on that. But that's all I have at this time.
Do you want to report some of the conversation that you and I had this morning about the ability that we could have out of the general fund if we wished to either loan some money to the promotion fund or grant it?
Sure. That was one of the options. Really, we just rolled through these. The first option was if we have to cut 150,000 or 160,000 out of the 2020 budget, what does that look like, out of the unallocated funds? And quite frankly, it got really uncomfortable really fast. So then, we looked a little bit. Another option is what if we didn't take out so much out of 2020? That makes 2021 look worse, so now we're potentially under two pretty rough years. And that's when option number three came up. That came from a discussion with Councilman Rux about, well, what if? You know, this has been a really rough year, and that's penny. What if we look at some of the other penny sales tax? And so proposed an option for $50,000 there, which provides about a one-third split between how we make the cuts and where we move into 2021. It made it a much better picture. I think it looks better for the organizations. There's been some discussion about how much more could we do. I think we have to be a little bit careful, because we're holding off some things in 2021 awaiting final numbers, but that's definitely an option. I would say staff would recommend that if it is much more than 50, we definitely provide some sort of, at least a partial repayment plan, maybe not wholly, but that's something we could talk a little bit more. And if you want to see some more options like that, we'll put some together for another discussion.
I appreciate those comments. In addition to that, could I have you, you know, address to the council, again, the conversation we had this morning about potentially reducing or delaying some of our commitments that we have made, maybe starting with what commitments do we have out there and how open were some of these organizations to us delaying payment of those?
Sure. We have three really long-term, not really, but long-term things in the promotion fund. The first is $100,000 to the Boys and Girls Club each year over a period of 10 years. We're right in the middle of that. We're in about the second year of a $5 million commitment to Northern, which a portion of that, about 200,000 a year on average, comes out of this fund. And then, the third one was a five-year deal to the BMX Club, and we're about right in the middle of that one as well. I have had discussions with Northern and Boys and Girls Club. Hadn't been able to connect with the BMX, but we're going to do that in a couple days. We made that arrangement since our discussion this morning. Both Northern and the Boys and Girls Club understand it's a tough year. And again, these are commitments, these are pledges, based on available funding. That's how the resolutions are written. Both entities I spoke with, Northern and the Boys and Girls Club, understand the city wants to make their commitments but might need a little flexibility. And if we don't go outside of the term, that's doable for them without much inconvenience, which just means we'd kind of kick it down the road a little bit. If we cut 10,000 or 15,000, $20,000 off one year, we'd need to make it up somewhere along the term. So depending how much you wanted to cut, over which one and how long, we wouldn't have much to time on some of them.
Thank you. Discussion from the council? Yes, sir. Ms. Rife.
My question would be, how much money is in our surplus and what is an appropriate reason to draw from that, in your opinion?
So as far as a surplus, just in city funds, that's one thing. We'll have Carl pull up here.
Unexpendable balance.
Yeah, the unexpendable balance. One thing to just think about is that the sales tax revenues this year and the one cent, if we just talk about that one, what I call the general, is up. So that's what we would talk about. So Carl, do you have something to share with them, or trying to find it?
Yeah.
So one thing about it, we know that there's substantial increases there. It would be appropriate to share that a little bit. Like I said, I'm just concerned about saying it never comes back. That might be one of the future discussions with the promotions fund, is why a surplus in the promotions fund would be important to help cover that.
I mean, an overall budgetary surplus in a separate account that we have. The reason I bring it up is I know it's sizable, and I know we're all apprehensive to reach into that, but my question would be, what situation where we'd be comfortable doing that? And in my mind, a pandemic might be one of those reasonable situations.
I can tell you from past experience, we dipped into it when we had the flooding in 2007. It was nice to have a little bit there, but at the same point, we've also used it to help fund some TIPS for Happy, because we then charge interest, and the interest is higher than just sitting in the bank account, so we've helped do some of those things. So when you sit there and say, what's an acceptable use to use the unexpendable balance? Really, it's whatever we decide is an acceptable use. But I do caution people that, you know, you don't want to make it a habit, because as 2007 was an example, when we needed the money, when we needed to buy stuff and you need to get stuff done, having that money was very beneficial, so.
And I agree. Oh, sorry. I agree, you know, as far as Josh, I mean, him and I have both had a conversation about that. I've talked to several of you guys about my feelings on the promotional fund. And I don't speak from just a member of the Aberdeen community, but somebody who firmly believes in marketing and understanding what the value that is for the city. And as a business owner, understanding how important it is that those people in the community that promote Aberdeen and try to refill that promotional fund have those dollars. I mean, I can't express what it means to me, what Downtown Association and CVB and the Chamber and those entities do for my business. I could not succeed the way I do without them, and I really want to stress that importance. I wouldn't normally suggest, hey, let's dip into anything, but because it is a pandemic, it's not like we go through this every five years or something. I mean, like, this is a very strange situation that we're in, and, you know, I think that's something we should look at. That first penny is definitely up tremendously. I think there's lots of options, and, you know, as I've been talking, there's also some movement we could do, like, I know the Chambers money that's allocated to them and a few other things that we could possibly move into the general fund budget for a year or two or defer over. I'm sure you guys don't love me saying that, but, you know, I know that there's some movement that I have looked into. I just would really like to see us think outside the box on the promotional fund for those groups, because a lot of them are hugely funded by us and make a huge impact.
It's not so much thinking outside of the box. I'd prefer not to pay for promotion fund activities out of the general fund, but I do agree that this is an odd year. I agree with Josh. This is, you know, we had to shut down businesses, some of the businesses that really feed into this to slow the spread, et cetera. But going to that, we're running big numbers this year. That will really affect our budget next year. So we have to think, you know, multi-year, and this is no different than, you know, when we hit the economic recession of 2008, 2009, very good years turned into, we can't spend a thing. So it's still being cautious, yet realizing that this is an unusual time, and we do need to make up for some of this. Just how do we do it is, I mean, if we're over this year, it goes to unexpendable balance. If we take out of unexpendable balance, it gets replaced by what we're over this year. It's really a wash, but there are things that, in the budget for next year, that were held off to wait and see what revenues do. And there's still projects this year that haven't been done, because we didn't know.
Carl, were you able to find the unexpendable balance?
This is unaudited numbers, but it's going to be very, very close to this. We're just at a tad over $6 million in the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. And in my little formula to where we should be, there's a spectrum between 5 million and 12 million, you know, got minimum, maximum, so we're about a million over what I would suggest we would have for minimum.
And are you able to forecast how much additional funds we will collect in 2020 out of the first penny than what we anticipated at this time last year?
Right now, the sales tax for the first penny is about 19.8% higher than it was for the same period last year. Now, those are numbers up through, I can't remember, the June sales that are reported in July, that we get the money in August, so, yeah, which is equates to right now, we're about $1.2 million ahead in the first penny. All the other revenues are fairly consistent with what we projected them to be for this point this year, so everything else is holding pretty steady.
Other conversation?
I would move as follows. Consideration of the 2020 promotion fund budget shall be postponed at the council's meeting of September 8, 2020, at which time, we, the council, shall address the following. Possible appropriation from the general fund to reduce or eliminate the promotional fund budget deficit, either as a loan or a grant. B, possible reduction or delay in the multi-year promotion fund commitments. C, possible adoption of the city manager's full reduction model, balance reduction model, or partially funded reduction model, with amendments as to the budget year 2020 only. Number two, the finance department will circulate to councilors and the mayor promotion fund budgets for completion by each councillor and the mayor, submission to the finance department for the computations in the normal manner based upon a reduced 2021 promotional budget, fund budget of $1,100,000.
Second.
It's moved in seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So basically, in the first three options, we're not really, let's say, getting a sheet where basically, because some have paid out this year, it's basically, we're just going to say, we're just going to have to, how we're going to manage certain things.
Yeah, my thought on that, Clint, is that we figure out, first of all, are we going to move money from the general fund? Secondly, are we going to delay some of these payments? Once we know that, we know what we have to work with, and then we can work with one of the city manager's proposals to deal with 2020. But I thought we have to know what we're dealing with in terms of how much are we going to be short, and then we can make those adjustments.
Trying to remember, did we get an email on what projections are for this year if it trend continues?
Yes, Carl.
Currently, the third penny promotion fund is running about 9.2% behind where it was for the same period last year. Looking at the month-to-month, again, it seems to be coming back slowly, but, you know, we're gaining 6% to 7% each month. Looking at specifically some of the things in the SIC codes, some areas are coming back stronger than others, but they all tend to be trending back.
But in terms of dollars, we think we're $150,000 behind, is that right?
About 150 to 170, correct.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? If not, roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
I'm not exactly sure what I'm voting on here. I couldn't hear the testimony from anybody. So would somebody speak into the microphone and explain what I'm doing here?
Yeah, this is the motion that I provided you earlier today, Mark. So this would be the motion, this would be the motion that would kick this over until next month, next week.
Okay, sounds good.
Did you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item would be a recommendation on bids for a new refuse collection unit for the Public Works Department, Solid Waste Division. Possible approval to award bid, item number one, cab and chassis in the amount of $81,650 to Crawford Trucks and Equipment. Bid item number two, refuse packer body in the amount of $59,950 less trade allowance of $35,000 to sanitation products to declare a 2013 International Truck surplus property for the trade-in to sanitation products and authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign the necessary documents after approval by the city attorney. And you're going to talk on that, Mr. Bob Zieden?
I will talk on that.
Perfect.
The recommendation Mr. Ronain read, so I don't need to reiterate that, I guess. Bottom line is, we ended up doing a lot better on the trade-in. This particular unit that we're trading in has an engine that is not as desirable in the industry. We thought the trade-in would be substantially lower. We ended up getting a good trade-in value on it, so this is actually going to come in many thousands below budget. So our recommendation is, as Mr. Ronain did read.
Would there be a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rux, seconded by Councilwoman Langer. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a change order and a payment request for Mill and Overlay Improvements Project. Possible approval of change order number three in the amount of $37,515 and 90 cents and payment number three in the amount of $534,772.67 to Jensen Rock and Sand for work on the project. Robin.
The project went very well. Most of the change orders related to repairs to the pavement prior to us finishing out the mill and then the subsequent overlay. So that 37,000, I think 20,000 was in repairs, and the rest was just little pieces here and there to get the job done. We do recommend approval of the payment in the amount of 534,000, and we do feel it went very well and have had several compliments on the finished product.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lunsman, seconded by Councilman Rife. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
After the shot of rain on Thursday, that half inch, I went and it drains much better on Lawson Street. Not a lot of backup was over the curb in that half inch, and last night was a similar thing after that good shot of rain. Haven't really had that inch to two-inch really heavy rainfall yet, but the water moves out much better.
And it looks pretty. I figured.
You know, the interesting part is, we put in that holding pond behind Sunshine Park, and we really have not had a chance to really test that since. And that's what happens when you build holding ponds, is you go into a drought. So at some point, we'll test it, and that will, hopefully, the water that would back normally up on Lawson will back into the pipe, and we'll be in a lot better shape than we were previously.
The last time our holding. The last time our holding ponds got tested, we did not like the result. So I'm happy with them not being tested fully and just working the way they're supposed to.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is a proposal from American Engineering Testing Incorporated to conduct quality assurance testing for P401. This is plant mix, ituminous payments required on airport and taxiway improvements, taxiway C. Possible approval and authorize the city manager to sign the proposal from American Engineering Testing with an estimated cost of $15,873 for work on the project. And I see that Rich is on, well, I think he is, yeah, Rich is on video. Rich?
It got quiet. You must want me to talk. So last month, I came before you, and the proposal I had last month was for concrete testing. So that phase of the project's finished up, and we're moving into phase two. So what we need to do is get the new agreement or contract signed for this company to perform asphalt testing.
Any discussion from the council? Who does ultimately pay for this, Rich? I guess we do, but from what governmental entity do we actually pay for this?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry, Rich. Is this something that is cost shared with the state and federal government?
Oh, correct, yep. Federal government's 90%, state is 5%, and the city is 5%. So city's share in this is about 800 bucks, and this was all figured into the taxiway improvements project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rife, seconded by Rux to approve. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a quote for camera system for 14 ride line vehicles from Safety Vision in the amount of $23,468.63. Possible approval to accept the quote for purchase of the camera systems for ride line vehicles in that amount and authorized payment. And I think, yes, and Tom Wanty, you're on video. Any comments for us?
Yes, the quotes that we've got actually came, I got a revised quote today, it's actually $23,68.63, so they knocked another $400 off of that. So every little bit helps a little bit, I guess. We do have a federal grant for $18,000 towards the purchase of these cameras, so the city portion is going to be $5,068.63. This will be putting cameras into 14 of the buses, and then we'll work on a possible another grant for getting the camera systems in the rest of the buses for later on.
If we delay this another week, can we get another $400 knocked off?
I don't know if it would work that way. It'd be nice.
Motion to approve, anyone?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rux, seconded by Councilman Rife to approve. Any discussion from the council? Yes, sir.
I just have a quick question. Are these cameras interior cameras that face the people riding the bus, or is it from the rear looking behind the bus?
We have, it's, some of the smaller vehicles, like the minivans, will have two cameras. They'll have a front windshield facing outside of the windshield, and then the other one will be facing the cavity of the van. And then, the cutaway buses basically are going to have a front windshield one, one at the, that's going to be able to see the driver in the entry walk-in door, and then will, any of the ones that have a lift will have a camera pointing at the lift, and then the rest are covering the interior of the buses.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is a presentation of the second quarter activities report for the Aberdeen Area Convention and Visitor Bureau. Casey Wisevanel, the executive director, is here to join us. Welcome, Casey.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Thanks for allowing us to come and present quarter two update for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Just want to go over these packet that I have real quick. I did try to get this out into everybody's hands, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at this, and I would entertain any questions that you might have along the way. Quarter two was tough for the CVB and the city of Aberdeen, but, you know, if you can find some silver lining in this toughness, that's what we're here to do, so I want to talk about that. Obviously, you guys know what the CVB is, and, and our, and our goal and our mission is to target overnight stays in Aberdeen. How can we get them here any way possible? We want them to spend, spend the night in Aberdeen and leave as much money as they can while they're here. That's our target, in a nutshell. We target families outside of that hundred mile radius. Three to five hour range is really strong for the CVB. Looking east and northeast is probably our primary targets. And in that packet, I, I guess I wanted you guys to meet some of the visitors that come to the Aberdeen area, so hopefully you had a chance to look at that. And, you know, on our website, we thought, how can we capture some of this attention of people coming to Aberdeen? How can we get some feedback to see what their experience is like? What, what brings them here? Why are they even coming to begin with? So on our website, on the front page, we have where you can download rides and discounts for Storybook Land, and we thought, well, before we give them the goods, let's give what we need out of them. So we, we put a little questionnaire on there, you know, what, you're coming to Aberdeen, what brings you to Aberdeen? Why, why are you excited to come to Aberdeen? You know, and some of the feedback we got was just tremendous. I mean, right out of the gates, having all of my grandkids together. My son loves to visit the Buffalo. The Land of Oz is a timeless classic. I love to share it with my boys. Bringing in our two youngest grandchildren on a grandpa and grandma camping trip. Perfect place for great grandkids to have a great time. I mean, we have four pages of, of who your visitor is and why they come to Aberdeen, you know, and, and they're hitting our target market, that three to five hour radius that kind of skirts around. You know, we're talking North Dakota, Minnesota, South Dakota, a little bit of Iowa, a little bit of Wisconsin as well. We love everything there, exclamation point. I mean, that, that's, that's your visitor that comes to Aberdeen. So with that being said, we, we knew our traffic was down this year. Apparently COVID is happening. Nobody told us. But, you know, we treat all our conventions the same, whether they're big or small, whether it's a family reunion, or whether it's that grandpa and grandma bringing those two grandkids to our largest, largest event that we've ever held in Aberdeen, which is our USA BMX Nationals. And I provided that information to you as well. We had almost a thousand riders coming from forty states in the U.S., flying into Aberdeen and driving into Aberdeen and packing those hotels and those wait lines at the drive-ups. That, that was, that was a huge weekend for us, and we are proud to help Kyle make that happen. Attendees, you know, that, that, we bring meetings and conventions, reunions, sporting events, whatever it is, that's what we're bringing to Aberdeen and trying to make that happen. How do we do this? We do this with engagement with our two websites. Visit aberdinesd.com for our vacation travelers and huntfishsd.com for our, for our hunting enthusiasts. What did quarter two look like compared to twenty nineteen? We had twenty-six thousand visits in twenty twenty compared to thirty-six thousand in twenty nineteen. We're down ten thousand visits due to, due to COVID. That's still pretty good numbers, twenty-six thousand visitors checking out our website. But here's the biggest thing. In twenty nineteen, we had forty-five thousand page views. In twenty twenty, we had almost fifty-four thousand. So we had less visitors targeting our website, but they're searching for more stuff. And that, that falls right into, the next thing I want to talk about is what are they searching for? We, we understood that quarter two was, was, was over. I mean, it's, it's, there's, the vacation travel for quarter two in Aberdeen, it just wasn't going to happen. And, and us, the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the partners that we work with, we easily recognize that, and we switched our focus. We want people to plan their visit to Aberdeen, plan their visit to Aberdeen, and plan their visit to Aberdeen. Whether you can still come this year or not, great. If you can come in twenty twenty, great. We're here to host you. If you can't, look forward to twenty twenty-one. But our top hits on our website were planning a visit to Aberdeen, hotels, events, places to eat, and then contest giveaway that we had, which enticed people to plan a visit to Aberdeen. So we took that message, and we quickly switched it to our twenty twenty-one focus. We, you know, like I said, we realized that that traffic probably wasn't going to happen for twenty twenty, and we wanted to maximize the dollars that we had available for marketing. We didn't want to waste money. We wanted to immediately put those dollars into action, and how can we regain that exposure? How can we regain those visitors to Aberdeen? So we, we, we just look forward to twenty twenty-one. Social media, we have four social media pages. Visit aberdinesd.com, huntfishsd.com, sorry. Visit aberdinesd, huntfishsd, Aberdeen Community Happenings Facebook page, which is a public page, and then the CVB Events Notice Facebook page, which is a closed group for retailers that utilize, when there is BMX Nationals in town, you might want to staff a little heavier, stay open a little later, accommodate that traffic to allow for those attendees to go out and grab a bite, might be a little bit later, but just giving them the heads up of, of what's going on. Looking at social media for visit, Facebook increased by five percent, Instagram increased by twenty percent, Twitter by almost two percent, Hunt Fish was up by one percent, Instagram up by six percent, Twitter decreased by one percent. I guess I really haven't figured out how to work Twitter, but I guess put your money where your, your best bet is, and Facebook seems to be the engagement that everybody utilizes the most. Looking at our print and digital marketing, we, like I said, we switched our focus. Either plan your trip for twenty twenty-one, plan later in twenty twenty-one, sorry, plan later for twenty twenty, or plan for twenty twenty-one altogether. Our focus was planning your trip. What destination are you coming from? So we actually put trip itineraries. If you're coming from the north, here's everything you can see and do on your way to Aberdeen. If you're coming from the south, everything you can see and do on your way to Aberdeen. Catherine in our office has done a great job. We've done vacation budgeting, so if you're looking at, if I want to bring a family to Aberdeen, what's a hotel going to cost me on average? What's the ten card punch ride going to cost me out at Storybook Land? What's it going to cost to eat? What can I look forward to, those, that grandpa and grandma that are bringing those grandkids? What can they look forward to when they come to Aberdeen? What's the actual cost? With our advertising, we track demographics, circulation, and impressions. That's our best way to measure the effectiveness of our, our marketing. But the biggest thing that we can gauge is our postage cost is through the roof. For the last three months, our postage costs have gone through the roof, and people are not only, as you can see, they're engaging the website, they're engaging multiple views, but they're requesting that hard copy. They want that hard copy in their hands to plan their trip and to plan to see what they can do in Aberdeen. Conventions, I have information on the conventions that we've tried to host this year. I gave you guys a spreadsheet, and on that spreadsheet was about thirty conventions, and we held two of them. You know, those are tough numbers to look at, and we've actually put together, it's a nice colorful chart, but we put together, we call it our COVID spreadsheet, and we track the economic impact lost to conventions that do not come to town. And these are, these are conventions, events, sporting events, reunion, anything that we actually have had a physical hand in helping, whether it's room blocks or room rates or visitor bags, whatever it might be, we've had a hand in, in promoting or hosting this event. Not only did we have to put in all the work to bring these events to Aberdeen, now we have to put in all the work to unravel the work we did for no benefit, and that hurts. That really does hurt. Not only Aberdeen, but it hurts, hurts your pride a little bit, that you're realizing what's being lost. This spreadsheet that I gave you, we gauge an average hotel stay is ninety-nine dollars, and each person that comes to Aberdeen spends on average about sixty dollars a day. Some may be a little more, a little less, but we tried to gauge on the low side because we didn't want to inflate any of these numbers. You know, so when you look at the economic impact, and these are just what we know about, you're looking at almost eight million dollars that did not come to Aberdeen. If you add in the family factor, like BMX bringing not only the rider, but mom and dad and the little ones along with it, that jumps up to almost eleven point six million dollars. Now, that money doesn't necessarily sit idle either. That money can circulate three to seven times in the community once it's here. So you could be looking at a seven time multiplication of fifty-six million or eighty-one million, you know. Does that really happen? No, it probably doesn't. But yet, if there's no visitor, like I've said in my last presentation, if there's no visitor that comes to the area, that's one less hotel room you got to clean, that's one less steak you have to burn, that's one less employee out of Wiley Park that you have to employ. So the value of a visitor is huge. That was our COVID spreadsheet. That's the, the fun one. Hotel Alliance, how do they come into play? The Hotel Alliance, year to date so far, has funded forty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars towards events held in Aberdeen. So they're still trying to put forth the effort. If somebody's willing to host something, by all means, they're willing to entertain it. So if they can come and present to the Hotel Alliance, or if they can come and request to present, I know we've helped fund Sizzling Summer Nights Concert Series and Downtown Con, or Downtown Concert Series, and, and it's, and it's, it's a great resource to have. But they're, but they're feeling the pinch as well. You look at the Hotel Alliance made up of occupancy tax, and right now, looking at the occupancy tax compared to twenty nineteen, we're down almost fifty-eight percent. So again, those are not good numbers to look at, but what it does show, when you're seeing the occupants, occupancy numbers down fifty-eight percent, that's a two dollar tax that a visitor pays on a hotel room when they stay in Aberdeen. Yeah, granted, somebody might rent a hotel room for their little Johnny's birthday party. They paid the two bucks. Thank you. But for all in all, that is a visitor that comes to Aberdeen. So when it's down fifty-eight percent, and we start talking about promotional funds, and we start talking about bottom lines, what does that really show you? That shows you the, the true value of what a visitor brings to the area. Not only that visitor, but the outside dollars that they, that they pull in as well. Looking at our SAC codes, Carl probably has a little bit better numbers than us, but we're tracking about twenty, twenty-seven percent down compared to last year. And I only look at lodging, eating, and drinking. And for the last four months, those numbers have steadily, are steadily starting to come back. Will we see them return by this fall? I sure hope so. I sure hope those hunters really turn this around. But these are tough numbers that we have to look at, but there's still numbers that show that silver lining. They show the value of what a visitor does when they bring in those outside dollars, and it shows the value and the hard work of the Convention and Visitors Bureau and other organizations, Downtown Chamber. They're the, they're the ones that are out there on the front line, engaging those visitors to bring in those outside dollars. But other than that, we have some, excuse me, some information from Arrivalist, which I get from South Dakota Department of Tourism. It's a nice little report I've shared with you guys as well. Shows April, May, and June, and not only does it show the amount of time that's spent by a South Dakota resident traveling to Aberdeen, but a non-resident traveling to Aberdeen as well. It shows the amount of time they spend in not only Aberdeen, but South Dakota as a toll, as a whole, but it also shows the cross visitation, the cross pollinization, whatever you want to call that, of where they visit on their way back to their destination. So we're looking at places like Pierre, Brookings, Sioux Falls, Watertown, Huron, Rapid City, but these places are originating from Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Minneapolis, Fargo, Valley City, Minot, Bismarck, Dickinson, and Omaha and Sioux City. So that, again, that three to five hour radius, which I talked to at the start of this, that's our target market. That's where we get a strong influx of visitor representation. And we do have nationwide advertising and digital advertising as well, but that quick traveler who can participate in a staycation or a getaway, the grandpa and grandma that brings the grandkids, that's, that's who we're looking at. Those are the ones that are able to travel. And like I said, we've switched our focus to maintain what we can for twenty twenty, but what can we put forward for twenty twenty-one? So any questions at all?
I would just like to say, I think your survey to get the goods is genius. I love reading those comments. I feel like that stuff we never get to hear, and I just think that was really smart and a great marketing tool. I think it's great that you help with the events the way you do, and I truly see a huge value in what you do, Casey, and I hope you know that. I hope the rest of the council sees it as well, and I'm sure they do. I think it's important to note, you know, what you said about still having to plan those events, even though they cancel, and I can't imagine how frustrating that is. And so I commend you for all your hard work in that, and really thank you and the Downtown Association and the Chamber for all the work you guys do together, because I know the three of you work really well together, and so.
We do. We have a good working effort with the three organizations, and, and I want to include the Parks and Rec in there as well. We work very strongly together, and I remember the day the phone rang. It was the Aberdeen University Civic Symphony when they canceled the screening of The Wizard of Oz, and I had two tickets, and I was ready, I was raring to go. And the phone rang, and they canceled, and I'm like, first thought is, what am I going to do with my tickets, you know? Then you realize what's happening, and then the phone rang, you hung up the phone, and the phone rang again, it was bull riding canceled, and you hung up the phone, and it rang again. I just yelled out to everybody in the office, don't answer the phone. Because we just, I mean, it just, it was hard. I mean, to, to see that happening, and, you know, there's, there's nothing you can do to prevent it, so thank you.
Casey, we're about, we're a little over a month out from.
I'm sorry. Well, I thought you meant time limit. I'm like, oh, here I go again.
Yeah. Well, you do have that problem, too. We're about, we're a little more than a month out from, from hunting season. What, what are you feeling?
From all the lodges and outfitters that we're hearing from, everybody is overbooked.
Good.
They're actually overbooked to the point where they're sloughing off clients to other lodges and outfitters that have openings. I like to talk to the car rental guys. They're not quite as booked yet, so I, I don't know what that translates into. I know we have that third flight coming in. I want to thank Rich for getting that done, and, and definitely that is helpful. Third flight being added Thursday and Friday, October first through November twelfth. And we will be out at the airport doing our airport welcome like we always do, but, you know, I want to think, from what I've been hearing from the hotels, I'm not hearing anything negative yet, so I want to think that those reservations are going to be strong. I really am hopeful for that. The birds are there, definitely the birds are there. I see those things all over the place. And, and our new Rooster Rush marketing program, it shows the T-shirt with the state of South Dakota with a pointing dog, a griffon, because that's what I have is a griffon, and then it says, here for the birds, with a teardrop right where Aberdeen's at. So that's our new marketing slogan for the T-shirts for Rooster Rush, and, and, you know, the birds are here. The birds are here waiting, and, and I hope those hunters are able to participate in that, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Ruck.
So right now, of course, you, there is twenty twenty-one probably you're planning on as far as the convention side. Have you heard anything on that part of what convention people are maybe doing? Are they still charging forward, or maybe in the earlier, they started pulling back, seeing about later part of the year, et cetera?
Everybody's still planning for twenty twenty-one. So far, that hasn't been, that hasn't been affected yet. What we're seeing is the twenty twenty cancellation that just piggybacks into twenty twenty-one. That's ideally what you want. But just for instance, Rapid City was supposed to host the AAU wrestling tournament, bringing in fifteen hundred wrestlers to Aberdeen. Aberdeen was supposed to host it next year, but we got bumped. So Rapid City's going to host twenty twenty-one. Sioux Falls already had a contract in place for twenty twenty-two, so guess where Aberdeen falls? We're at, we get pushed all the way back to twenty twenty-three. Is it still on the radar? Of course, you know, but it's, I don't like being bumped, you know? I mean, Aberdeen can, we can bang heads with the best of them, and, and I don't like being bumped all the time. But at the very most, I'm glad they're just willing to reschedule. I, I don't want to see something just flat out get canceled. I like the word postponed a lot better than canceled.
Thanks.
Yeah? Anybody else? Sorry.
Thank you, Casey.
Okay. Thanks, guys and ladies.
Next item would be approved of the bill list of August thirty-one, twenty twenty that has been submitted to us. Would there be a motion?
Moved to approve.
Ooh.
Well, motion by Reinbold, seconded by Lunsman. Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Ruck.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Abstained. Motion carries. Abstain. Motion carries. Next item is payroll, approval of the pay period, approval of payroll for pay period August sixteen, 2020 through August twenty-nine, 2020, and for the city's share of social security, old age, and survivors insurance, retirement, health, and life insurance.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Rux, seconded by Rife. Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye. Motion carries. City managers, report, Mr. Gah.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things here. Next week, a week from today is Labor Day, so our meeting will be on Tuesday, not on Monday. As a reminder, we'll be bringing you back the resolution to approve the capital improvement plan update that we discussed. And also, we'll start the first hearing on the, the overall city, city budget. So just encourage you to review those documents. And if you have any questions, reach out to me during the week.
On a related matter, when, when would, you know, with, having, having had the opportunity to think about it for twenty minutes, when would the finance officer and the city manager wish to have us start balloting again on the, on the 2021?
As far as the, the promotion.
Promotion fund, yeah.
Carl, when do you think we could send that out? Tomorrow?
I think that's tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah.
What kind of a deadline do you want to give us? Because we like lots of time.
It takes me five minutes to put it into the spreadsheet, so.
No, no. What kind of deadline do you want to give us?
Yeah.
Five minutes.
Twenty-five minutes? So we should get it done by five tomorrow?
No, 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 no. No, no. What I'm saying is, you can get it to me Tuesday morning, and I can put it together.
Don't be that nice, Carl.
Well, I think, I think we should have them done by Tuesday. Not, not tomorrow, the next Tuesday.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So, so you'll give us a week?
Yeah, absolutely.
Everybody good with that?
It is a holiday, so.
It is a holiday. Anything else, Joe? I'm sorry.
No, that's it.
Anything from the council?
I just want to say, oh, sorry, you go first.
No, you go.
Um, go check out the new mural. I took a picture by it. It's absolutely wonderful. They're giving away five hundred bucks if you put it on your social media and hashtag greetings from Aberdeen. Although there is a greetings from Aberdeen from the Scotland Aberdeen, so don't use the one with the flag, the Scotland flag. But it's just beautiful, and I just love seeing that kind of stuff. And it's something positive. So go out there, take a beautiful picture, and post it.
Councilman Rux.
This is for the city attorney. We are on track to have our charter amendments on the ballot in November.
That's correct. We have completed the proofs for the ballots, and it looks like we're all set to go. I think those initial publication of that will be sometime in late, later in September, will be the first. And then there'll be the notice. But the ballot itself, the full ballot will be, the full charter amendment will be, will be published at least one time and perhaps three times before the election.
It'll be a page turner. Yes, Councilman Rife.
This is for Robin. On the intersection of North Eighth and Roosevelt, going west, I see a lot of confusion as to whether or not there is a turning lane there or not. There's a driveway there, so the white line stops, and it's going to be confusing. My, my guess is there is not a turning lane there because there's not a, an arrow to turn right.
You're correct.
And I don't know if there's a sign or something, because people are confused as to whether or not there's a turning lane.
And one of the issues that we've had is if you, people who are following the actual lane lines, you may be two or three back from the signal, and they've got their turn signal on, and then you'll have somebody that's further back sneaking into the shoulder. And they're sneaking into a spot that really they don't belong. I have had that complaint twice in the last week already. So we do have to see if there's a way to make it a little more obvious what, what the intentions are.
Anything else from the council? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Lunsman, seconded by Langer. All in favor, I'm sorry. Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.